Lori, can you hear us now?
Yeah, thank you.
And then I wanted to, it's not really a question, but just clarification. On July 26th, it was confirmed that Dr. Bailey is going to be on Zoom to present the dashboard issue that I brought up. And I noticed that on the draft, and I know this is a draft, it's not listed there at all. Oh, it is there.
I think, I think the request that you made, however, was for her to go first.
At 5:30.
At 5:30. I will, I will share that with Tracy and Alyssa.
Okay, I guess I was looking forward at the beginning. Yeah, if you could make sure it's at 5:30, thank you. All I have.
Any other questions? Lori, do you have anything?
No, let's do it.
You guys good? All right, we'll move on to number two on the agenda, which is the Financial Empowerment Center. And we have Ms. Solano again and Ms. Dunham. It's great to see you again.
Mr. Chairman, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. It's with, it's always a privilege that we present this evening, the just the basic information on a financial empowerment opportunity for a grant. And it is the fourth offer to the city of Pueblo in the Financial Empowerment Series. We also have some guest presenters this evening, and we have only 15 minutes. And so we're going to move through this pretty quickly. So you can hear from them rather than from, from me. And Shelley will close us up. PowerPoint is, must be on here already. Documents and discussion. Yes. All right, and next slide, Shelley. Thank you. So why financial empowerment? The basis of this grant is to be able to help people build assets, helping people access bank accounts, which the Bank on Grant, you know, is being facilitated by United Way. And then providing financial education and counseling. So those are the fundamental pillars of the Financial Empowerment Center, which is actually a physical location that individuals will be able to go to, to receive financial counseling. It could be more than one location, depending on the providers.
Can you hear us now, Lori?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear.
Okay, good, we'll go fast. The city's role, and next slide, please. Very good. The city's role is first to convene the community partners that will foster collaboration. Second is to provide the leadership. Third, to help raise awareness of services in the community. And fourth, to partner in bringing resources to the community to advance financial empowerment efforts. And we also have an additional home grant out of the Housing Department. For the 21, 22 home grant acceptance, it actually includes financial empowerment counseling. That is part of the requirement in order to accept the grant. And that grant will be on the City Council's agenda next Monday as well. So this will just feed in nicely in the collaboration from other federal grants, as well as community partners that are both private and nonprofit. We also have some nice mentorship relationship forming with the Denver Financial Empowerment Center. And we have a guest who will speak on that just momentarily. And I'd like to turn it over right now to the technical advisor out of the City, Cities for Financial Empowerment, Mr. Brad Willows. He has been an incredible resource for Shelley and I and the mayor in, in developing the beginnings of the, of this grant opportunity. And he is the Senior Associate for Cities for Financial Empowerment. He is on Zoom. And Brad, can I turn it over to you for a few minutes?
Sure, thank you, Laura. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for having me here. I hope you can hear me okay. Again, my name is Brad Willows. I'm a Senior Associate with Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. We are a national nonprofit organization that works exclusively with local governments to enact financial empowerment programming and policies across a range of different areas like financial education and counseling, banking access, asset building, and consumer protection. So as Laura mentioned, we've been working closely with the city of Pueblo to consider the, the beginning of what we call a Financial Empowerment Center in the Pueblo community. This is a program model that offers free professional one-on-one financial counseling as a public service in partnership with a variety of nonprofit organizations in the community. This is a model that we're currently working with 35 cities across the country to, you know, develop and to localize and to, you know, serve residents who struggle with financial instability in many different areas. So it's currently up and running in 25 different cities. And we're working with an additional 10 to plan and launch the program. These range from cities as large as New York City, down to some smaller southern cities and Denver, as was mentioned. So this is a program that has driven about $170 million in debt reduction and about $35 million in savings for participants across about 130,000 residents of those cities that we have been able to serve. So I know we, we don't have a ton of time. I'm happy to answer questions later on. But, you know, just to say that we stand ready to continue working with the city of Pueblo to develop this program that has been so impactful in so many communities across the country. And we feel very strongly that this is a fantastic opportunity for you all. So again, thank you so much. And I'm happy to answer any questions later on about more specific aspects of the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. And now we have a message from the mayor of, and the city and county of Denver, Mayor Hancock, who has operated a Center for Financial Empowerment for a number of years. And his message is via videotape.
Hey, to my good friend, Mayor Nate Gradisar, and the honorable members of the Pueblo City Council. Mayor Michael Hancock here. Hey, I understand you may be thinking about establishing a financial empowerment initiative. And I wanted to take a moment to share our experience here in Denver. You know, since its inception in 2013, Denver's Office of Financial Empowerment and Protection strives to achieve economic mobility, generational wealth, and financial equity for Denver residents and small businesses. And I am so proud to share that we have provided over 23,000 individual coaching sessions, helped close to 9,000 individual clients, helped increase residents' credit scores by 46 points on average, helped an average of 60 new home purchases per year, and so much more. The work we do is proven to lessen the need for social and emergency services investments, helps to build sustainable generational wealth, changes the narrative of generational poverty, and helps to assist people of color get employment where they can thrive and not just survive. And we're not done yet. So thanks again for reaching out and best of luck in creating a program of your own. Let us know if we can help you at any time and good luck.
Very good. And joining us via Zoom this evening is the Director of the Denver Office of Financial Empowerment. And he's been on, on Zoom meetings with Shelley and I in preparation for this first year of planning. And the second year is, is in development. And Mr. Salas, are you with us this evening? And can I turn it over to you to share Denver's experiences?
Yes, absolutely, thank you. Once again, my name is Jay Salas, and I'm the Director of the Denver Office of Financial Empowerment and Protection. And as previously with the CFE talked about was that, you know, they have many portfolios. We launched our initiative back in 2013 from, within partnership with the Cities for Financial Empowerment. And it really was just the Financial Empowerment Centers. We started off with six centers that were integrated into existing services to help amplify those services and outcomes. And one of the things that we did early on when we were applying for the grant was that we, we did a survey of everything from TANF to domestic violence programs, both from folks that were working in the field and also those that were clients. And one of the things that we discovered is that financial insecurity was either, most of the time was the number one issue, if not the number two issue, why they were not advancing in their programs. And so, for example, with domestic violence, the number one issue was financial insecurity as to why they were not leaving their perpetrator. And so when you think about, about that and the integration of financial empowerment and those opportunities, it was very vast and big. And so what we really did is looked at all of those pain points and where we were spending tax dollars and why people weren't, you know, I guess graduating or moving on out of some of those programs. And even with our social services programs and food assistance. And so we really were very thoughtful with the tutelage of CFE to integrate financial empowerment, to help amplify outcomes. And as you heard, our mayor, we, you know, we've helped to reduce debt over $9 million with our residents. It really is our platform. And I know it sounds very proverbial, but I truly, truly honestly believe this is that we do not give people fish. We teach them how to fish. And so these programs are very sustainable. It's much more than just financial literacy or education. It's developing long-term sustainable behaviors that really help to build wealth. In our office, we, I have challenged our staff and the mayor and I even challenged our city to really talk about changing that narrative from generational poverty to generational wealth building. And so many people that come in do not have a credit score, they're unbanked. And, you know, two to three years down the road, they're homeowners, they have equity. And then now we're learning, we're teaching them how to protect those assets and building a pathway to pass on generational wealth. And so I'm super excited that you guys are embarking on this. You know, we started off with six, we now have 13 Financial Empowerment Centers across the city and county of Denver and more to come. And, you know, during COVID, we also learned how to do these things, you know, do the coaching sessions virtually as well. And I'll just kind of end with this, is, you know, we had an independent study by Corona Insights. So for every dollar that the city has invested in financial empowerment, we've had a $5.56 return on investment. When they're integrated into our housing stability programs, for every dollar that's invested, we've had an $11 return on investment. So when you think about investing upstream and, and lessening the need for, for downstream services, it absolutely makes dollars and cents. So I'll end there and anything that, questions that you may have or in the future, we are here to help.
Thank you, Jay. And I'll turn it over now to Shelley, who will go through the, the strategies and steps of our, our first year planning grant. And then the second year is the implementation grant.
The reason we're here tonight is because we have, thank you, Mayor, because we will have an ordinance coming to you next week for acceptance of a grant to, for this project, for doing the planning for the Financial Empowerment Center. So the, the items that will be on there, the, the activities that the city will undertake in this process are to identify partners and integrations. And we already have been doing that. We've worked with, we already have obviously recruited United Way to work on the Bank on Project and have other partners that are, that are willing to step up community organizations, nonprofits, to work with us. We're going to identify financial counseling providers, meaning, you know, where in the community might these providers be? Would, would maybe want it, United Way, different agencies, where would they be to, to meet people? And that way we would have them where people already are receiving services. So they're integrated in that way. Researching counselor training options. The CFE Fund provides resources on training these counselors so they know how to do a professional and effective job according to the best practices. We'll be working on securing match funding because after the planning grant, there's an implementation grant. But there are dollars that we need to locate. And so we're doing that work now to find opportunities for that match funding and then apply for implementation funding from the CFE Fund, which will happen this fall. So what this grant doesn't do is add any personnel. So there aren't any city positions as part of this grant, in case you're interested in that detail. I thought we might let you know that. You can read easier, that's right. But we do believe that there's a, a role for the city in this. And, but we have many partners who are excited and very willing to be part of this process. And we're sure that we'll be able to find organizations to work with to bring these really valuable services to the community. And then I think we're all available for questions, depending on what you'd like to know.
Great presentation, thank you very much. Counselor Flores.
Help me untangle this, all right? I've looked back on May the 17th, and as you know, there was only six city council members and we voted three to three, so it did not pass. But I think you were given the instructions to get a nonprofit that might be available to take over the program, which was United Way. Help, help me explain the difference between what we did back then and what we're doing now. You keep using the word empowerment, and that's confusing me because it, it almost seems like we're doing the same thing we were trying to do back then.
That's a good question. And there are two separate programs. The program we were here for in May was called the Bank on Program. That's specifically to help people get connected to bank accounts that are unbanked. And what we did, and the ordinance that we had for you at that time was specifically for that Bank on Program, not for the Financial Empowerment Center, just for the Bank on Program. And so after we left this meeting, we worked, we sought out a partner to take over that grant. And so the city's not the grantee on that grant anymore. United Way of Pueblo County is. And so they have stepped up to do the Bank on Program. The Financial Empowerment Center is a different program. And we are really only in the planning phase for this. So the grant that we have now is a $20,000 grant that we'd like to accept, like for you to accept on, on the city's behalf to do the planning. And then nothing happens implementation-wise unless we apply for and receive a second grant, which would require us to come back to you again. And at that point, we would need to have a funding plan for how we're going to match the dollars for the grant.
Thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
Counselor Shelley.
The last thing you said, it sounded like we would be needing to create another position at some point in time with this grant?
No, no, not necessarily. I mean, that what will likely happen is that.
Not necessarily doesn't get it for me.
No, I mean, that, that's not the, that's not our intention at all, right? Our intention would be to work with another local organization to do that work, to, to supervise and employ the financial counselors.
In no way, I'm looking for a solid no. In no way are we gonna, is this gonna put us in a position like the other one did where we would need someone two, three years down the road to run the program?
Well, I'm staff, not a policymaker, so I'll let Laura answer that rather than me.
I mean, is this a round the corner way to do this again that we've turned down before?
Counselor Shelley, it is not. It is an absolute separate grant opportunity. And Mr. Will, Mr. Brad, Brad Willows will be able to share with you also what other cities have done. And you can see, and also talk to Jay Salas here, that in Denver, there's enough funding resources that have been developed that are outside of total city and county funding that are, have been generated for funding for staff in these counseling centers that are not city employees.
And you would expect the exact same thing to happen here.
I would expect this to, nice to have partners that are just 100 miles north as well.
Okay, they don't need to tell me anything. You answered my question, thank you.
Anybody else? Lori Winner, do you have anything?
I do. So the $20,000 grant, the city is just a pass-through?
No, the $20,000 grant is for us to conduct the planning. So that's not, it's not a pass-through for that. We can spend it on community engagement and community outreach, those type of things. So there, it isn't necessarily a pass-through. It depends on, we don't know exactly what we're going to use that 20,000 total for, but we can use it for any kind of planning activities associated with the program. This is not an implementation grant, this is just a planning grant.
Okay, okay. And then, and then so United Way is going to be doing the planning?
No, the United Way took over the Bank on Program, which is a different program. There's two programs. There's the Bank on Program, which is strictly focused on connecting people to bank accounts that are unbanked. And then there is the Financial Empowerment Center, which is what this one is, which is free professional one-on-one financial counseling. So this is one that we're doing the planning for, but we will be seeking community partners to actually do the implementation work once we get to that point. Does that make sense?
Not really. So somebody at United Way is going to be, I don't understand why the city's involved in this at all with planning if United Way is going to be doing, doing this.
United Way is doing the.
It would just be a pass-through.
And United Way is doing, there's two programs. There's the Bank on Program, that's what United Way is. There's the Financial Empowerment Center, and we're doing the planning for that program. They're two separate programs.
But we're getting paid for time, right?
Who's going to be doing the, the planning then, do you know?
Counselor Winner? The, the actual Financial Empowerment Centers may or may not even be at United Way. For instance, I had a conversation with Stephen Trujillo at the, the Housing Authority, which there would be, he said, an excellent opportunity for anyone moving into or being accepted into the Housing Authority to have one-on-one financial training, financial counseling on building up their asset base. Whether, whether they participate in Bank on or not, it will be an opportunity and probably it turned to a requirement at some time. The same with our Department of Housing. In order to accept the housing grant, there will be a component that requires some financial counseling in order to accept the home grant for '21 and '22. And the phrase in financial empowerment has gained some ground, incident to the recovery from COVID from many individual agencies and organizations across the country. And it, so that phrase has been adopted widely in all of these grant opportunities.
Okay, so this $20,000 grant that we're accepting is basically going to go into general fund. And then wherever, whoever is going to be obtaining that counseling will be obtaining that through different departments of the city or whoever we refer them to, correct?
Correct. The $20,000 will go directly into the general fund. It will be attached to a grant project, so we can only spend it under grant-approved items. But there will be no counseling until, until and unless we are accepted by the Cities for Financial Empowerment for implementation. We have one year to put all our ducks in a row to find the different facilities and locations like the Department of Housing, like our, like our Housing Authority, who, or maybe its neighbor works, who would be requiring their customers to actually go through a one-on-one financial counseling. So that 20,000 is just seed money to make those relationships and build, and build the, we don't, we're not building a physical location, building the relationship and putting the program in place and going through training.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yeah, I think it's a good, a good way to go. I mean, why not take the planning grant and, and see where this goes and how we're going to implement it and, and put it together? So, yeah, I, I think it makes sense. Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Very thorough, good, good report. Number three on our agenda is the Housing Trust Group Fairway Village Home Funds Request. We have Mr. John Christine, Mr. Quinn Gormley, and Mr. Valentin De León. Is everybody here?
Yes, Mayor, we're online.
All right, and you are?
I am Quinn Gormley with the Housing Trust Group.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much for your time, Council, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate, appreciate you guys taking the time to to sit with us tonight. We are Housing Trust Group. We are, we were founded in Florida by a father and son team, have been around for 40 years, developed over 8,000 units, mostly in the affordable space. We come to you today to present a project that we're working on here that we hope to get approved. It's 222 units in the north part of town. This is slated to be a workforce affordable project, meaning that we want to serve people in the community that that are working, your teachers, your your first responders in this market, serving a, an income range of about 8,000 to 46,000. And uh, sorry, do we have the slide, the presentation? Are we gonna? There we are. So Housing Trust Group, Father and Son, we, we're a very collaborative group that we really are not looking to to put our own footprint out here. We really want to work with the community, with the leaders, and develop projects and developments that that are collaborative and what the community wants to see, that that are very supportive in in the way of services, offering safe community spaces with amenities that that are tied, closely tied to the, to the local communities. Go a little farther. Our development, we're, we're seeking, Quinn, I'm sorry, do you want to jump in here? Or Val, if you want to? Are you guys, can you guys hear us there? Val, Quinn?
Sorry, John, it's kind of breaking up there from the, from the connection. So what, what you want me to lean in on, John, is, is, you know, are the the kind of depth of need right now in the markets? And so right now, just specifically in Pueblo itself, as John had kind of indicated, the workforce component serves between those earnings incomes of about 8,600 and those that are about 42 to $45,000. It's a, it's a, it's a much bigger program. It's going to be funded through the Longcom Housing Tax Credit Program that works with CHAF, the Colorado Housing Finance Authority, will be using Tax exempt Bond Authority and working with the, with the, the city's housing team on a kind of integrating in and making sure that we can provide services that kind of meet the needs of the workforce residents there in the community. We've discovered through our market study analysis that the community is is underserved with the affordability component. And so right now, it's anticipated that individual within this district would need to work about 71 hours per week to to earn a wage high enough to pay for housing, which is a good story. I mean, it says that, you know, this district is growing. It's, you know, there's a lot of people moving to Pueblo. A lot of great things have been happening with the redevelopment downtown. So we're excited to be here. And again, I I think that this is a well-integrated development. And I can't emphasize enough, I mean, you know, we don't want to be considered out of town folks. I know that a lot of times developers kind of come in. We're community-bound developers. We're long-term holders. The tax credit program financing structure requires us to be in the transaction with our investor, which will more than likely be a larger bank, like a Chase Bank or Wells Fargo. It requires us to be in it for 30 years at a minimum. So, and we generally recapitalize our projects within the 15th year and and just make sure that we have a well-maintained asset to to keep our reputation up within our communities that we serve and also with our financing partners. Happy to answer any additional questions. John, I don't know if you want to take it from here?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Quinn. I'll go into, you want to go down a little bit? We'll go into the site. The site is located off the 25 and the 50. We feel this is a great part of town that has excellent access to the transit corridors. Folks that are, that are working out there, retail amenities nearby for the residents. We feel it's a safer part of town. And the only recent developments that we've seen built in in years have been market rate. So a great need for affordable housing. We understand the need for Pueblo housing is is very great. The market is 96, 90%, 96, 97% occupied, which which tells us that the market is pretty full and in great need of units. We hope that this project can can deliver and fulfill, fulfill some of that need. We did consider phasing this project as we're looking at 222 units. And the more we looked at this and talked with with market experts, we really felt it was in, it was in Pueblo's highest and best use that we try to develop this at one, at one time to bring on as many units as we can to help fill this this need. To let you know a little bit about the process with CHAF, we, we had our early concept meeting with them and they, it was very positive. They invited us to submit the full application. We are the only one in the Pueblo region on this, on this round. So it looks like it's well-supported by CHAF as well.
Hey, John, if if I could quickly add, this is Quinn Gormley again, one of the things that in conversation with CHAF on their conceptual meeting, they have a really great process, different than other states. But they're excited about getting some of this funding out into the, into the western side. So, so we're, we're, you know, we're looking forward to to working with them and helping them achieve that. And they know that there's a need out in this area. So within the western front, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you. With that, here's, this is the development, the current site plan. The total site is is nine acres. There is a future hotel and retail piece with that. We are solely focused on developing the affordable housing for the community, and that that is our mission. It's a mix. The project will be a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms with community space, playground, a dog run, a place for for residents to fix their bicycles, store bicycles. It will have some electric charging stations as required and a tot lot and a children's play area in the courtyard. This is just showing sources and uses. Our total development budget, we're estimating about $44 million to develop this with 21, 21 million of that coming from bonds and owner equity. Just going through the timeline, getting down in the weeds. Some general market.
Hey, John, really quick, could you back back up and just show the timeline itself? Just want to just show that timeline. It kind of shows what we're anticipating in the delivery of units. So the blue line that you see there is when we anticipate that units would start to come on to the market. So it won't be just a, a, you know, here's 22, 222 units immediately. We would gradually bring those units online and rent them out.
That's, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Uh, how many years? Two years? And then if you, going down, uh, did you want to talk about the market capture at all, Quinn?
Yeah, yeah, this is just emphasizes what I brought up earlier, so no need to to jam the agenda. But yeah, we're, we're looking at very low capture rates, which means that that there's a lot of good absorption to be had in the market.
If you go down, here's, here's some of our designs that we've worked on and some other projects. And we show you this to show that as you slowly scroll down through some of the different projects here, they're all very unique and they all took a very collaborative approach with the community. And and again, putting up different designs that that each community, we thought fit for, for the different areas.
Yeah, we're not a cookie cutter type developer and owner. Where we like to, as we emphasize here a lot, we like to make sure that we're hearing the voices and coordinating design efforts and just making it conducive to the community. We think that this is a, you know, an underutilized space that could be repurposed behind the Kmart there and really kind of emphasize that corner, get it back into circulation from the, from an earnings standpoint for real estate taxes and and being a good partner to the community. But also, you know, it, it provides a good opportunity to 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 really create a nice product next to the golf course there that somebody would really enjoy living and and having a good quality of life around that type of property with its services and amenities.
With that, we'll open up to Florida. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank, thank you for your report. I was helping Counselor Schelling get through some issues on that because I had looked at it before, so, and I apologize. I didn't mean to be rude. Counselor Schelling.
Okay, they totally behind the Kmart. So are you north? Are you taking up part of that trailer park? You're going to run along the east side of the golf course and run south?
Yeah, directly behind, on the east side of the golf course, directly behind the Kmart site.
Okay, are you taking up those trailer parks too? Are you going that far?
Uh, no trailer parks on the side of the site.
I got a hand raised back here. What? Thank you.
What did he say? What did Brian say?
He's coming. Hang on.
Sorry, John, just getting our reference point. The project site is the north side of the Country Club Golf Course and west of Kmart. The trailer parks that Counselor Schelling was mentioning was on the east boundary near Elizabeth. So it'll be the the lot to the north of the golf course.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores. What, I looked at this over the the weekend and I'm impressed by your presentation. I'm impressed by some of your other projects. The one thing that I am concerned about is that you're going to have lots of families in this area. And your, your egress and entrance into this facility is really placing, placing the project in probably the busiest, busiest intersection in all of Pueblo. And that is Highway 50 and Interstate 25. And is there any other way of getting out of the facility except fronting Highway 50?
Currently, the the ingress egress is coming in Club Manor Drive off off Highway 50 there.
Is that, well, is, is there, is there more ways than one to get into the?
We were working on an ingress egress. If you look at the site plan to come out to Elizabeth, that would be another, another access point. And we are very much monitoring this is, this is planned to be a family project.
Right. And then just
I was going to add, Council, Councilmember Flores, yeah, the, the, we're very much instructing the architects and engineers to design this because we're very conscious of the traffic impact and what the traffic counts look like. We would have to have two points of ingress and egress, particularly for fire, because fire would need ways in and out. But one would obviously be in the main entrance, main point of ingress and egress to make sure that we're controlling, you know, some of the concerns with security, that type of thing. We we would look forward to working with the city. And it's also its police department to talk about what it's experienced on its, on other properties with there, just to make sure we're addressing those type of security concerns. But we we definitely want to be attentive to the impacts along 50 in the, in the traffic counts.
But this, this was a location that that had a hotel there, motel called the Chilton years ago. And it's been, it's been gone for a long time. Am I correct in in your planning, is you're still going to have a plot of land where another hotel could go in front of Highway 50 and the apartment complex would be behind it?
We are, we are discussing that. The, the priority here is the affordable housing piece above and beyond any retailer hotel piece.
Right. And then my, my last, I I don't know if it's a question, but it's a concern. And that is an ax, well, proper kind of recreation for the kids. There'll be lots of kids in this project. They don't have access to a park. They don't have access of getting in and out of that facility to even walk to a park. Explain to me, I know you said playground, and tell me what that looks like. Tell me what kind of facility the kids are going to have there.
Sure. In our projects, in our family projects, we typically will do some sort of a tot lot for the younger children and then, and then a little bit bigger playground for the kids that are a little bit, you know, a little older. So this is something that we would like to, we're ideally placing in the courtyard for maximum visibility and safety so that parents, residents can can keep an eye on their kids, create a safe spot. But we we do intend that this would be heavy family and utilized. And we've seen a very successful approach with this in our other, in our other developments.
Does that include a pool, swimming pool?
We're not, everything is in consideration, but at this point, we're, we're not looking at a swimming pool.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McCully Bacica.
Hi, I just wanted some clarification. Is all of the housing affordable housing or just a percentage of it affordable? And did you also explore the south end of Pueblo? Being that Councilman Flores brought up the safety of children and what a busy intersection that is, I feel as if there's a lot of land on the south end of Pueblo that would be maybe safer and a lot more family-friendly.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Bacica. This is 100% affordable, serving income bands from 30 to 80% of area median income. And we we explored many areas all over Pueblo. We were not tied to just one location. We just thought this was a great location for, for an affordable housing development in the community. That said, we hope to be around for for some time and develop more than one project with with the city of Pueblo. We see how great the need is here, and we want to be around and be a part of this community.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Schelling.
Dennis brought up a great point that I wasn't thinking about. You know, they're going to be, they are surrounded by the highest traffic count there that the city probably has there. And where are they going to go? Will they go to, let's see, they're surrounded by a fence on the golf course. And they got 50 they're surrounded by. So if you have 220 units, how many kids you figure will be in there?
220. Yeah, we're largely designed with with one bedrooms and two bedrooms with the, with the lower percentage of three-bedroom units. So again, we're, we're trying to attract the workforce. Now, generally, you see a lot of single parents that live in developments like this with, you know, a combination of of larger families that will be in in more units. Our design will be more defendable space. So I don't, I don't know if you, if you had a chance to take a look at that material, the design shows kind of the interior courtyard within the harness of the building. And the reason why is just to ensure that, you know, somebody who's doing the dishes can look out the windows and see their kids playing in a lot that's in the interior courtyard and not outside running around the parking lot. So parking lot is designed, or it's a wrap around the project, not a wrap in a sense of a parking structure wrap, but to wrap around the project. And again, it's really to start going down the road and creating a defendable space that's conducive to families and being able to keep an eye on your children. And as John emphasized earlier, we, you know, we do things like, you know, pickleball courts, tennis courts, basketball courts. It's just the things that we need to take a look at, where we would foot, footprint them around the property, exercise within exercise rooms. The other thing is we're very closely tied to Rainbow Housing, which is a nonprofit services coordinator. Those are the types of things where they, they can provide online, like technical services for families, like helping them, you know, get financial stability, helping them, you know, build their credit scores, helping them all the way up to technical schools like TEDs and stuff like that. A lot of that can be done electronically now. So we've been incorporating that type of product to help emphasize the family component within the property. And we're happy to share more about that as we get down the road too.
Thank you for all that information. But my question was just simple. How many kids you think will be playing in the courtyard? I mean, how many, how many children? You got to have a number. How many children do you expect to be living there?
You could easily have 50 to 60 children living on the property.
That's all only 50 or 60. Okay.
You could easily have that. Yeah.
Okay, I think Dennis has some real good concerns. I think everybody Okay, I think Dennis has some real good concerns. I think everybody kind of does it where you're gonna put that thing, but. And you did say you had other places you'd looked at. It's just, it just seems to me those kids are gonna be trapped there. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councillor Tencio.
Are all these rental units?
Yes, one hundred percent rent.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know that I share the location problem so much that uh, because we have other affordable low, low income apartment buildings around town that are not even close to a park or any recreation. They don't have any recreation facilities on, on campus. So I don't know that I share that, that concern. But uh, the rents.
Anyone, anyone who needs it and they're replaced.
Uh, councillor Winter, do you have anything?
Um, no, I think it's a, I think it's a great location. Um, there's good schools in that area. The YMCA is maybe five minutes away. Um, you, you know, as I have said over and over, Colorado is expected to double its population by twenty forty. So we're already behind in housing. So it's, I mean, we need this pretty badly.
Well, that's a great report. You know, the first thing that comes to my mind is I'm very grateful uh, that your company is even considering Pueblo and wanting to come here and do this. Uh, when I look through the, when I look through the rental rates, we've looked and we have the opportunity uh, to look at a lot of projects that are projecting how much their uh, rents are going to be and, and. Uh, quite frankly, yours were fantastic. Uh, based upon the product. I think uh, this is truly affordable housing uh, when it comes to, to, to apartments. And I, you know, that's very, very encouraging. I do, uh, I, I, I'm very uh, very happy about your track record. And then, and the buildings that you have in Florida and the projects that you, you, your company has put together. And it, it seems to me like you guys know what the heck you're doing. Uh, you, you're not a, somebody just coming in here and trying a project for the first time. You're, you're a company that has a, a great background. So again, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming to Pueblo. Uh, I hope we can, uh, this is just one of many that can happen within the, within the city of Pueblo. Because we certainly need it like every other community in the country. So uh, anybody else have anything? Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
We look forward to working with you.
Okay. Does anybody need a restroom break or anything? Everybody good? Uh, next on the agenda, the street utility fee, Mr. Mark Aliff. I'll just start it off. This is by no means a, a uh, Mark Aliff show or councillorman Aliff show. Uh, but we did have a discussion last week, as everybody knows, on the, uh, when, when we were talking about the half cent sales tax. And you know, everybody knows my argument for the half cent sales tax. I don't, I don't like taxes. I, I think that there's always ways to, to do things uh, within our means and, and still be, be very productive for the community and to do our jobs. So, you know, the mayor uh, rightfully said to council, come up with your, come up with a plan, talk about it, see if there's another way to do it, collaborate. Uh, and, and, and if, if we can come up with a better idea, he was certainly willing to listen to it. So you know, on those, i- i- in, in the time that we've uh, since that meeting, you know, personally, I said, well, how the heck are you gonna look at this? How, what is the best way to do it? I've made the argument several times on several different ways to do it with the highway user transportation fund money. Uh, councillor Flores and myself argued uh, to get uh, business licenses instead of water meters for, for businesses to uh, pay for the street repair utility. And it seemed like every argument that I made, people listen. I mean, I'm not, I'm not accusing council of not listening or the mayor of not listening to what I have to say. I'm just saying I'm not being very convincing. And ha- have an argument that is just uh, beyond arguing with, that you can't shoot holes in. So what I did is I took the budget and you know, when you look at a budget and we're gonna go through this again this year like we do every year. And when you look at the budget and you look for money, the one thing that we always do and was so frustrating to me personally. And I don't know about each of, every one of you, but when you look at it, it's very daunting. And when you try and look for money within a budget, it's, it's, it's like, it's truly like looking for a needle in a haystack. You know, we, we, o- over the last three years that I've been involved in the budget process. You know, I brought up ideas about uh, non-departmental expenses. Uh, we look at, at, at a lot of different things and different, a lot of different ways to cut money. But even when we cut that money, it really doesn't make that big a difference. It really doesn't make that little difference, that big a difference. And I had this, I had this, this thought process that says, we look from within the budget, we work our way from within to without. What if we, what if we look at the outside and work back in? Is there a different way to look at how we budget and how we look at how our money's spent? So I'm gonna give you, a- and I want to clarify two other things. Because I've been hard on, on, on some councillors of saying for the last ten years or twelve years, that we haven't done any road repairs. You know, I, a- and I always made the argument, well, we had money, we should have been doing it. Uh, we should not have, have turned a blind eye to, to the roads and we wouldn't be in the place where we are today. But if you go through the budget and you really look historically uh, over the past twenty years, out of those twenty years, probably thirteen or fourteen of the years, there wasn't enough money. It would have been very hard to, a- and, and very difficult for a council to come together and come up with five, six, seven million dollars uh, to work on roads. So I put together. And I understand why we did the street repair utility. I understand uh, the need. So I'm not arguing from a position of the roads do not need to be fixed. And I don't believe that there's a councillor here uh, or the mayor, that we don't want to get the roads fixed, but we want to do it. I'm just arguing that there's a different way to do it than where it, the, the way that we are doing it and the way that we're planning to do it. So I'll pass these out real quick. Councillor Laura. Yeah. And I, I sent uh, I sent these over to uh, to Lori. Uh, councillor Winter uh, this afternoon. So what I did is I took, I actually went, I went back twenty years, but I said, no, I'm, let's just go back ten years. At the very bottom of one of the pages within the, it, one of the main pages within the budget, when you come to the fund balance. There's a very, there's a line there, and this is the line that hit me, is the fun, the, that bottom line is a fund balance available for future appropriation. That's what that line item is. It's a fund balance available for future appropriation. So the numbers on the front page that you see are the audited numbers from the financials, the city budget, year by year from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen that are audited. Obviously, two thousand twenty, we're gonna hear about, and two thousand twenty-one, we're in the middle of. But for argument's sake, I took those ten years. And I looked at what the ending fund balance was after it was audited, and these are the numbers. You go from two thousand twelve at one point three, two thousand thirteen, one point seven. And then you see in two thousand sixteen, it begins to get high. Ten point one in sixteen, fourteen point three in seventeen, thirteen, fifteen, twelve. And we know in this budget cycle, when we budgeted, that we had, after we uh, took money from the general fund to, to uh, put into the, the budget, we ended up at five million dollars. So I'm not even gonna mess with that and talk about uh, how sales tax is up thirty-six percent. And we're, we're, we under budgeted many, many million dollars when it comes, when we get into the twenty twenty-one. And that the budget finally gets audited. But if you just look over those ten years, we came up with a total of eighty-two million, three hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, ninety-three and eight hundred ninety dollars. For an average per year, if you just took the ten years and you averaged it over ten years, you had eight million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Available for future appropriation. Now, and you guys are gonna have questions and I'm gonna answer that. But I want you to go into page two now. And I'm gonna give you a scenario based on the, on, on those ten years worth of numbers. Here's what my assumption was. My assumption was is that I'm never gonna let the fund balance get below two million dollars. If I don't, if we have a choice. And anything over ten million dollars, we're not gonna touch. Okay? We're, we don't have a street repair utility and we don't have a street tax. If you did that scenario, that's what those numbers equal. In twelve and thirteen, you would have no money because there was no, we were below two million dollars. Two thousand fourteen, six hundred and seventy thousand, fifteen, three point two. And then in sixteen through twenty, it was eight million. Because even though it was fifteen million or fourteen million, you only take eight million because you never go below two. And you never go above ten. So the most you could take is eight million dollars. That comes to forty-seven million, one hundred four thousand, twenty-five dollars. For an average over the ten years of four million, seven hundred ten thousand, four hundred and two dollars. So literally over those ten years, we could have accrued and built up a four point seven million dollar fund to, to repair our streets every year. Even using that forty-seven million, one hundred and four thousand, you still had left for appropriation thirty-five million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Does everybody understand the math I used on that? So I took it a step further and I said, well, forget that. Let's say that's too much money. And we still wanted to have a street repair utility. I took scenario two on page three and I said, here's, what if we never went below four million dollars? And we stayed between, and we only appropriated the money between four million and ten million. How much would you spend? You would collect thirty-two million, four hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars for an average of three point two million. You could literally drop the street repair utility in half. Collect, accrue the money based on that, those numbers and still come up with four point seven, four point seven million. A half cent tax. The half cent tax is gonna create four point eight million. Okay? It's also gonna accrue five million dollars a year towards uh, uh, money for grants and, and, and things like that, right? Total. But it four point eight was going specifically for roads. Correct. So, so in order to keep it apples to apples, that's why I kept it at four point seven million. Okay? On those two scenarios, city council could direct in any plethora of ways to accrue that money and to spend it without a street repair utility and without a sales tax. Now I wanna, I want you to think of one thing that really took me back in this whole process. I'm not asking council or the mayor or anybody else to cut one position. I'm not asking us not to fund one nonprofit. I'm not asking to change anything within the budget, other than the way we appropriate at the end, after the audit on the following year. This takes into account what's left over. The money that's left over after everything's been audited. You still have the council uh, contingency. You still have the Tabor contingency. You still have over three million dollars in uh, funded but vacant positions, which is volatile. It moves up and down constantly. But historically, historically through the budget process, there's always been funded and vacant positions to the tune of at least two million dollars. And when I say two million dollars, when I look at the funded yet vacant positions, I'm not talking about police positions. I'm not talking about director, you know, uh, directors that haven't been appointed yet, like a finance director. And I'm not looking at the fire department. So if you added back the funded and vacant positions out of the police and the fire. And you can't, you can't not do directors because you're gonna hire a director. That mu, that number just goes higher. So I'm telling you, or I'm, I'm explaining that there's money in there after all of your expenses and all of the money that you, that you receive to be able to do this without a tax and without a street repair utility. But these are just frameworks. I am absolutely not the smartest guy in the room. And I know that there's a lot of ideas on how this could be done, and I know I'm giving you a lot of numbers right off the top to say, hey, well, just, just believe what Aliff said and uh, let's, let's roll with this. I, I don't expect that. But I think I can show and that you can find out if you delve into this, that there's absolutely a way to do this. Without us going to the voters and burdening the people with more taxes and fees. And our fees, obviously, the street repair utility is a fee, but it's literally a tax and we're taxing them. And you know, and I hear the argument all the time about, you know, it's only a few dollars. If people, you know, people go out and buy a refrigerator, they're gonna pay a few extra dollars. Or if they go buy a car, they're gonna pay a few extra dollars. But literally in some of our districts, there's people that if it's a hundred dollars, or if it's fifty dollars, or if it's whatever it is, it's the difference between eating. It's the difference between their kids getting clothes. It's the difference between somebody going to the doctor. And I just take it seriously that when you tax and tax and tax and don't work your butt off to make it, to do it differently, we're hurting our constituents. We're not doing our job. And I'd leave it with this. If you do something like this and it doesn't work and it doesn't happen, at least we can go to bed at night and say, when we ask for the tax or we do something different, that we've done everything we can possibly do within the money that you give us to get this done. Now, when we talk, there's one other portion to this. If you notice, I didn't say anything in these numbers about the highway user transportation fund money. I think it's perfectly legal and okay to accrue a million, million and a half every year out of the highway user transportation fund money to put off to the side to match these grants for highways. So you can take five million dollars a year, six million dollars a year, three and a half million. I don't know what that number is. This body would out, obviously have to vet that out and flesh it out and work out what those numbers look like. But we can also build up that fund that we all think that uh, we need to get the highways done or whatever. Uh, and you know, that's a whole nother argument that we're not gonna have tonight on whether you need that or not. But I'm just saying, that's the, if, if we decide we had to have that fund, I think there's a way to fund that still within our budget without going to the voters for a half cent tax. And without us, completely without a street repair utility. So you're gonna go back to the people. If we, if we can actually pull this off and we can actually make this work, you're gonna be able to go back to your constituents and say, we not only are getting the roads fixed, but we're not charging you anymore to get it done. We're doing it and we're getting it done. And that was my whole uh, paradigm shift over the last week and, 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 and what I came forward with and uh, I'm perfectly willing to listen and, and uh, have you shoot holes through it and tell me that I'm crazy. Uh, councillor Tencio.
Well, let me take the first shot. No, I, I really didn't understand it, but I'm willing to look at it. And I think we should take a good, hard look at your idea. Uh, I propose that we do an arts, cultural and recreation district for the city, therefore taking all the money that we pay to the arts, cultural, recreation end of these that we pay. That's about six, seven million dollars a year all by itself. That could be paid for by a arts, culture and recreation district. Uh, I, I, we have a structural deficit in the budget to begin with. I mean, this is a good year, forty percent. I mean, this is a good year, forty percent. Last I saw uh, up year to date in terms of our collection of sales tax, but this year isn't gonna happen again. What do we do when we have a deficit and we have to use the fund balance to to fill the budget to to get it balanced? Um, the, the thing that we've been doing is leaving uh, positions. Vacant so that we could pay for the for the deficit. I I think we should look at this. I think we should look at the arts, cultural and recreation district. And to be perfectly honest. I've been talking to a lot of people about the streets, the street utility. Everybody's totally ticked off about the street utility. Not one person. Said that they would vote for a half cent sales tax. And half of them are asking where in the heck did that highway user tax fund money go? And why aren't we using that? And why, if you have forty percent increase in income this year. Why are you not using the highway user tax fund for your streets and fill your deficit with the amount of money that you're getting? I try to tell them, well, next year's, we can't forecast what it's gonna be next, the following year. That's one of the things that I I have a problem with this. We don't know what the increase in sales tax is gonna be. It's, it can't. It's not sustainable that it's gonna be thirty six, forty percent. Every year, there's just no way that it's gonna do that. We may go through a period where it's gonna be real good. And it looks like our economy is heading in that direction. But, but I I'm really looking forward to doing this, but my thinking is, let's look at this. Let's look at the uh, uh, arts, cultural recreation district. Let's look at uh. Uh, any other ideas that are out there. Uh, why? And I keep, and I can't answer the question. I try to tell them, the highway user tax fund. Someone decided way back when that they were gonna use that half of it to uh. To pay salaries in the transportation department, in the streets department or public works, whatever it was. And they were only using six, seven hundred thousand a year to do uh, to do uh, uh, actual street repairs. They said, why in the hell would you do that? I said, well, it was legal and they did it. And that was an accounting thing that they had to do besides, we were in deficit every year since, since two thousand and seven that I was aware of. Uh, that's, that was my first year on council. And we were in deficit then. Uh. I'm willing to look at it and uh, get the best of. Financial minds in this, cut it apart and 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 see if we can do it. I'm I'm willing to do this, but I also think we should look at other things too. Not just uh, one thing. Uh, again. I've been talking to a lot of people, not one person said it was a good idea to do half cents. First of all, they don't trust us. You know, that was the second thing. Well, you guys can't even do a street utility. What the hell's matter with you guys? You know, we want you, you want us to trust you with absent sales tax? You know, and then when I said we were gonna save five million dollars a year for for uh. Uh, uh, matching funds for grants and stuff, they said five million a year, that's twenty five million dollars in five years. You know, uh. One guy told me, he said, wait a minute, you got Pedco. You pick up nine million dollars a year and a half cent sales tax there. If you need to matching funds for that intersection at the highway fifty, bypass fifty and what do you got? Take a million dollars a year out of Pedco. It's, it's uh, uh, economic development. Million dollars a year in ten years, you can match. This one, and I go, well, not a bad idea because it is economic development. And that's what it, you know, that interstate is all about. So that was a great idea as far as I was concerned, you know, we could afford a million dollars a year out of. The half cent sales tax, we can, my economic development to do things like that. Uh, but I'm willing to look at everything. And I think we should.
Thanks, Larry. I just wanna, I I wanna make clarify because you made a good point here. So you guys are are all on board with this. When you look at the numbers from two nine, two thousand nineteen down to two thousand twelve, those are audited numbers after any money was transferred. From the, from the balance fund to to the budget. So this is after. Okay, I I just want you to understand that.
Yeah, that's your fun, your fun balance.
Yes. After it's audited.
These are our reserves.
Well, it doesn't say reserves.
But that's what they are.
Well, it doesn't say that. It says on the, it it, we have, here's what we have. We have, and and again, we can argue this, but but I'm saying you have a council reserve. You have a table reserve and you have two or three million dollars in funded and vacant positions. So I think there's plenty in reserve that if you still left thirty five million or forty five million into that. That 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 money would be, there would, there would be plenty of money.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. And I may be wrong and you can, and.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not the accountant here, but I think. You, you can't take what the balance was at the end of each year and add them all together and say that's what it would have been over ten years. Because that money has rolled into next year's budget. So what you have available is the money you have at the end of the year. Uh, and that's obviously how we funded street repairs in the past. And we haven't done a very good job about it and people are complaining about it. Uh, so we'll certainly take a look at this, but that's my initial reaction is that, you know, these are monies that we've held in reserve that uh. And that when they're gone, they're gone. I don't think you have forty, eighty two million dollars over ten years because.
No, I I think you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right on that. And what it gets spent on is during the year. So remember, I argued, I I argued that at the end of the year. We have enough money to do it because we, it rolls over from our, our, our reserve. What you're calling our, our savings account in the, in the general fund reserve, which is the fund balance. But what I'm saying is during the year, we look at resolutions and ordinances every two weeks that take money from that general fund. That that we're not budgeted, correct?
There's always expenses.
Well, there's always expenses, but.
Sometimes we amend the budget because we haven't appropriated money or budgeted money for a particular item, and there are instances where we say. We're gonna fund this from reserves. I guess the purchase of the fire station land on East Fork would be a good example.
It comes out of that.
It comes out of that.
That general fund that the.
Comes about.
Balance available for future appropriation.
It adds to that what we budget this year out of the reserves, seven point seven million dollars.
Yes.
Uh, to make the budget balance. So we added another hundred thousand to that deficit. Uh, when we did the fire station. So that's an approach. I mean, we could say we'll pay for it if we have the money. At the end of the year. That's, that's one way to do it.
But I don't think it, I don't think that you can tell at the end of the year. Because. There's no way at the end of the year you'll know exactly and. We're always two or three months behind in the way that the money comes in and the way that it's accounted for. The only reason that we're not having a, an audited report until next week, right?
We're lucky.
Supposedly.
Yeah, we're lucky.
So supposedly the auditors are coming next week. Well, this is July.
Right.
We don't know how much money we, we made in twenty twenty. And it, and this is July. So my premise was is that you don't do it at the end of the year because you don't know at the end of the year how much that you have. If you did it off the twenty twenty one budget, you, it says there we'd only have five million dollars for appropriation. Which means that you could take three point one million dollars towards a street repair. You get, hear my argument? If you do it at the end of the year. Because this was truly a number at the end of the year, five point one million. This is what we're budgeting. This is December. This is December, but the reality is after a full year of, of sales tax, a whole year of a, of a lot of other things. That number could very well be fifteen million, twenty million. Whatever, and you won't know that until July of next year. You truly won't know what that number is until July of next year. So we have to do is you'll be a year behind. Essentially, the, does, does that make sense what I'm saying? You, you're actually budgeting for the street repairs in July, not in, not in December. If that makes sense. It it'd be, it it's gonna be difficult and that's, I think the mayor has great points that uh, that, how that money is spent and. Things like that. But anyway, councillor Shellen.
Um, Mark, two things. One. I'd like to visit with you for about an hour at your work next, sometime this week. The straw that breaks the camel's back on sales tax is always we get less sales tax collected than we budgeted for. What's the straw that breaks the camel's back on this?
The only thing that can. Look at it historically. You look at it historically, there's only two years out of ten that you would have collected zero dollars.
How do we fund it then?
You don't.
Right.
You don't.
So you just have no street repair that day.
But assume that you collect eight million dollars, eight million dollars, eight million dollars, eight million dollars, and you're only spending. Five million or six million or whatever. I I don't know what that number is. And then you have zero, you still collected over the previous four years, thirty two million for, for instance. Or twenty million. Or whatever, so. You weather the storms, so. Uh, you're making hay when the sun shines and you're in the bar. Uh, councillor Winter.
Yeah, I I I think what you're getting at is that we don't really have any goal budgeting and that's the fault of council. Um, we don't seem to have any goal oriented budgeting for streets and. It's also political will. Um, I I know throughout the years that council just sits there and doesn't really question the budget. Um, I, I think you and I were the only two that voted against the budget because of the, the seven million dollar deficit, which. We're obligated as council members to provide a balanced budget. Um, we requested a finance committee in in order to sit down and discuss these kind of things and and the mayor said we couldn't have one. Dan Kergostic said that city council could form any kind of committed, the committee that they wanted, but we didn't seem to be able to get a finance committee. Um, you know, one of the things that John Suthers said that was one of the best things he ever. Did as mayor was to form a finance committee with two council members on it. Um. Uh, you know, I I think Pedco right now is pulling in about eleven million dollars a year. Isn't that correct? With the half cent sales tax?
Twenty twenty, it was nine point one.
Nine point one? Um. You know, the thing is, is that we, we raised taxes or I guess we didn't. The citizens voted for a tax increase for more police. And our crime has not gone down, it's gone up. Um, we have a half cents tell, sales tax in there for jobs and I I think the majority of the people are are kind of questioning that. Um, we've increased our taxes for the schools, but yet those don't seem to be improving either. Um, I think what we need is, is to be able to sit down with finance, talk about all these ideas with them. You know, you need to remember that um, council is basically less than a part time job. I mean, we're getting six hundred dollars a month. Um. We don't, we, we are not getting paid full time to sit down and and go through this budget. I mean, I've, I've, I've gone through it, but you know what I mean? We're not, we're not the chief financial officer and and. Um, we, we don't have the opportunity to sit down with anybody in finance either. So it just seems like we just keep talking in circles about this whole issue or any issue that's budget. Goal budget oriented. I mean, we have, we have no goals when it comes to our budget. We just kind of. At least that's what I think, at least with roads. Um, and probably several other things, but. Anyway, I think we should talk about a cultural district. I think we should talk about um, the, the fund balance. Um. I think we should have a committee, a finance committee that we can sit down and and do this with. You know, they're able to sit down and um, you know, they can take the whole budget and minus ten percent off every line item. And give you, give you a figure. I mean, it's just, it's just a click of a button. So. We should be able to sit down monthly and kind of look at a cash register report from, from finance to see where everything's going. Another big expense, um, and I mentioned before are our sewer repairs. I mean, we're probably spending over three million dollars on emergency service sewer repair um, every year. And um, I don't know if anybody's ever read The Big Necessity, but that's a book I read several years ago that just talked about. How horrible the world sewer systems were in because everybody, everybody likes these big sexy projects with new buildings. But yet underneath everything, it's just crumbling and falling apart. So. I don't know, we can, we can also talk about, you know, these vacant buildings that aren't getting trashed for stormwater. I mean, it's been over a year. We could have collected three hundred thousand dollars from that. You have vacant buildings um, that are not paying any kind of street fee either on their, on their water bill. Um, we should be looking at that. We need to make it equitable. The street fee needs to be equitable immediately. For businesses. Um, I think we all know where we got sideways on. On that and and that was when we were discussing the street fee. And um, Ray Aguilera said it would be a dollar a month on television, a dollar per household. And then the chieftain picked it up and kind of advertised that to everybody that it would be a dollar per household and and. You know, anybody that could do basic math would know that that was not going to be the case, but it was kind of sold that way. Um, so I think we need to do a lot of backtracking on that. Oh, also, um, maybe another thing we could look at is de- debreusing for ten years.
Thank you.
Be an idea that I certainly would be willing to have a discussion about debreusing and, you know, I think terrible's, or Tabor's a terrible idea. Uh, but uh, I might be in the minority on that. One other thing.
I don't think you're in the minority at all. I think that's something we could put on the budget and it would definitely pass.
All right, well, we'll certainly, uh, we'll certainly consider that. Is there a sentiment among the council that we ought to submit to the voters, uh, a Tabor issue to DeBruce?
Absolutely.
Give some heads nodding, yes. All right, okay, we'll uh, we'll work on that then. We'll work on that because I'm, I'm, I'm totally in favor of that. I think the voters get a chance to elect me, they get a chance to elect you. And they can elect people that they think are responsible for taking care of the, the money and that's how it ought to be. Let me just read uh, something to you from uh. Andrew Hayes, our public works director with respect to the highway user tax fund because that's been discussed. Uh, and I think this will help maybe clarify some misinformation. That's been out there in terms of how that money is used and where it's going. Our total highway user tax fund revenues budgeted for twenty twenty was six point three million dollars. Of that six point three million, four point four million was dedicated to capital projects. And one point nine million was transferred to the general fund. In turn, the general fund provided four point nine million dollars to streets and transportation related personnel costs. And O and M expenses. Only a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine dollars of the entire six point three million. Of highway user tax fund was spent on personnel costs. That equates to only one point eight percent of the total budgeted amount of H U T F revenue provided to the city. Uh, it's less than, you know, it's the wages and benefits maybe of two, uh, of the forty six employees in the public works department. That uh, was spent on salaries through the H U T F. So um. His bottom line is that um. The H U T F funds were overwhelmingly directed at street repair and maintenance activities. In in twenty twenty and what little wasn't directly repaired to that was spent to um. Repair and maintenance projects, snow plowing, street sweeping and other critical support for the road network. So I just wanted to. Point that out, that that's how that H U T F money was budgeted for and used in twenty twenty.
So capital projects means a street repairs?
Street repairs, um, yeah.
How much was that again?
Four point uh. Four point four million. Four point four million was dedicated to capital projects and one point nine million was transferred to the general fund.
Councillor Shelling.
A couple of things. Folks have come up with good ideas that we should be looking at. And we're talking about this half set or Mark's idea. I think we can look at so many things we turn to butter. And I'd really hope we could. At least on this one, focus on this. I can't get past having somebody from Denver and Bangladesh pay for part of my streets. I mean, I, I just, I can't get away from having somebody else help me pay my mortgage, my car payment, any of that kind of stuff. I mean, I I just, I can't get away from having somebody else help me pay my mortgage, my car payment, any of that kind of stuff. And it's based on sales tax revenue, and yeah, it could, it could go down every year. But I I really, you guys, I can't get past having somebody else help me pay for this. Instead of, we pay for it all ourselves. When I have a choice, I'm gonna have somebody else help me pay for it.
Mark, great presentation. You make great presentations.
Well, apparently not, Bob. Well, in the final analysis.
You know, in the final analysis, it's the voters that will decide whether or not we should vote that tax. And the question, and obviously if they say, no, we don't want to pay a sales tax, we'll leave it uh, the way it is. If they decide they want to have that uh, street water, that's street maintenance utility fee that's assessed on the water bills, they can do that. We can, you know, maybe go back and say, okay, is there a way we can use these reserve funds on a regular, consistent basis? That's been.
They're not reserve funds.
Pardon me?
Are not reserve funds. Well, we'd say that on the budget if they were reserve funds.
Yeah.
Can you do both as another way of thinking of it? Just a thought.
Counselor Flores.
Uh, number one, I wanted to thank you for doing this work. Uh, and I think all of us, I think you deserve all of us to go back and and look at, uh, because I'm I'm not prepared uh, at this stage without looking at the budget and getting some detail. Uh, the one thing, uh, I always thought the fun balance was really, if you look at your schedule between two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, uh, that thirteen forty-eight is included in the next, that amount, it's kind of a rolling amount that goes in. So then instead of having the combination of the two in thirteen, we just added uh, uh, four hundred dollars, I mean, four uh, four hundred thousand. So so that the difference, you've got kind of a rolling amount in that fun balance. So that you can't add all of those columns in my mind, but I I'm gonna have to go back to my accounting uh, one-on-one book to to look at that because I, right now, I need to do a little bit of analysis, but I'm thinking that you can't add up all those numbers and that you really have a rolling balance and and the difference between those years is what you know, what you're adding to the balance. The balance is always a number. And if it goes higher, it's because you're adding another amount. Uh, and um, I I've just got to do a little bit of analysis, but I think we owe it to you because you've done a lot of work here for us to look at this and at least give it a a proper review and then come back and uh um, see where we land up.
Can I, can I say something?
Hold on one second so I can get this out.
Okay.
So the assumption is, is that we started off with one point three million and we just added to it every year. That we never spent any money out of the the uh, general fund. And we just kept uh adding and accruing and and it got to be that amount. So I went back through old budgets and looked and I'm telling you, money gets spent every single year out of that fund. It's not a stagnant sit over here on the side fund. It's it's literally your bank account. Think of it as your account, that if if you make X amount of dollars this month and you spend and and you you pay all your bills and you don't spend a dime extra. And then the next month you have more money, so it accrued, right? But to think anywhere during that year that you didn't use a portion of that money on other expenses that came up is crazy. It just doesn't, it it just never happened. And I agree with you. I think that the financial experts need to come back to us and say, no, you're all wet. This this, this money is accrued. We never touch it. It just stays in there because it's it's baloney. It, that money gets spent. Not, does all of it get spent? No. But take the number. We always do this in the car business. It was the great Joe Verdi line from the the trainer from California. He says, if you don't like my numbers, take it, cut it in half. You cut it in half, you still got four million dollars a a month, a year that you can spend on roads. You get what I'm saying? So.
Yeah, it's just.
Let's say that that money never accrue or or always accrued or whatever. It it just doesn't happen. I.
Well, you know, if you take the first two years here uh, in two thousand, in two thousand uh, thirteen, you could have used that whole one point three forty-eight. I mean, in other words, that could all have been expensed and used for whatever you wanted. It just happens that you had a surplus in two thousand thirteen that was one thou- one million seven hundred and forty-one. And that's what I'm saying is that y- you can have spending all along here. It's the number at the very bottom is going to be lower as as you go down there, but it's really the difference, I think, that the fun balance represents and not an accumulation of all those numbers. And I I uh, you know, I, that's the only thing that's bothering me right now, but I I I do thank you for doing this exercise.
Makes sense.
I think it's good for all of us to to look at different ways to do things. But I'm I'm gonna have to go back and um, and check, do my own checking on the budget. I didn't bring my my book today.
Ms. Solano.
From my years of teaching governmental accounting, this is a balance that is cumulative and the change in each year is reflected of the increase in profit to the city or the decrease in profit to the city after all revenue and expenses have been accounted for. So it is really the change in each of these years that you want to look to. And my quick and dirty math looks like it might be about fifteen million to the good over those ten years that you have reflected. To make an equivalent to a for-profit business, this would be the equivalent of a retained earnings balance. Revenue that has been earned by a corporation that has not been spent, but is available for future use. And in um, governmental accounting, it is signified by fund balance. In a, in an individual sole proprietorship, they don't have a uh, balance sheet that would reflect their profit or loss on a cumulative basis. So you are right, it is sitting in their checking account as cumulative, but it still has merit. We just have to look at the differences between each of those years.
Ed?
Look at all options. Again.
Counselor Brown?
Well, our biggest expense in the city is the employees and their salaries. And one of the ways they budget balance the budget over the years since I've been on council is holding some of those positions vacant. So these numbers here may not show how many employees were actually employed during those years. That's how that's audited. I understand. That's not audited employees. Where's the number of employees?
Yes, it should be on the first page of every um, department.
But the fund balance, I don't disagree with the fund balance, but it doesn't say how many employees were actually employed during the year. So that's how they not filled positions is one of the ways they balance the budget.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. And that's one of the, one of the things that I've argued ever since I've been on on council is that with the decrease in employees, you get a decrease in services. If you, if there's eight hundred employees and fifty of them are never employed and that that those, those are fifty positions that are not providing services to the public. If it's a hundred, then that that's a hundred employees that are not providing. That's a decrease in services that our uh constituents are not getting, and they're still paying. Let's, and that's one of the things that uh, I I I had a problem with when we had a city manager is that they use that to balance the budget. And they went into the 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 uh, fund, the the fund, the fund balance to balance the budget again, uh, when it needed more money. The ten percent reserves is another pot altogether. Uh, the fund balance, like Mr. Aliff said, is not the reserves. The the that ten percent, I couldn't find it in the budget. I don't know where it is, but it's got to be in there someplace, that that ten percent of paper reserve.
Counselor, potential, um, B one.
Well, I think that I I think there's some confusion on the 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 vacancy, the funded and vacant positions. If it's an audit, if it's an, if it's a final total at the end of the, in July. Okay, in July, we're gonna see the numbers for twenty twenty, correct? In that num- in those numbers is not going to be the funded but vacant positions because they aren't an expense, correct? So they don't, they're not in that number. They, we never paid for them, so it was never an expense. The difference is when we budget every year, we budget with the funded that vacant positions, so it shows as an expense that never gets spent. So that's where the cushion comes in. Uh, so you have three billion dollars at the end of the year or whatever that goes back towards those numbers. But uh, we we don't pay for them unless they're working.
So for for twenty twenty-one, our ending fund balance is seventeen million, three hundred and fifty, fifty thousand, fifty dollars minus Tabor emergency reserve of two point six million minus the ten percent council designated reserve of nine point five million, which would leave us five uh, five million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars as a fund balance. Able, we, that's the the amount of money that we're able to use for future appropriations, not the seventeen. Because the the Tabor reverse you reserve and the council designated reserve has to come out of that seventeen million.
And these numbers are all bottom line after reserves.
Yeah, the fund balance should reflect all of that, Larry.
Correct.
It does.
And once that's spent, it's gone.
It's gone.
And so next year, when we come back to the same thing, we'll, won't have five million dollars in it unless our revenues have exceeded our expenses by that amount. Right?
Exactly.
Right. So if they haven't, there's no fund for the street repair.
None.
Right. So I mean, that's, that's an approach we could take. If we can say to the voters, we'll fix your streets if we have the money. Um, or what we proposed is taxing them five pennies on a ten dollar taxable purchase. That doesn't include groceries, pharmaceuticals, gasoline, those kind of things that poor people spend their money on for the most part are not taxable. So tho- those are, those are sort of the choices and the approaches that you can take.
But what what are the deadlines uh, for getting us on the ballot?
I think we have to have a ballot uh, in September, September or late August. Yeah. Is when the ballot question has to be submitted. Um, and as I say, it's it's I can't raise the taxes. You can't raise the taxes. Only the voters can do that. Um. I suggest we send it to them, but not if people on council are gonna campaign against it. I just don't think that's a good idea. If that's what people have in mind, let's just forget about it and say, we're gonna live with this system until we come up with something better.
Mark, so I just want to know if I'm understanding this right. So as Mayor Gratais I was saying, once the five is spent, it's spent, so we wouldn't have anything in reserves to match any kind of grants. You know, to be competitive, as we had talked before, that we needed that money in reserves to be competitive, correct?
Right.
And be able to get some other street grants.
Right.
So we wouldn't have that.
Okay, so let me show you, let me go through this one more time, just to make this, make this so everybody we're all on the same page. My proposal says you always keep two million dollars. And you always keep every dollar over ten million dollars. So say in two thousand seventeen, there was fourteen million, three hundred and thirteen thousand. Let's just stop the clock and say we're in two thousand seventeen and there's fourteen million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We would take eight million of those dollars, which would leave six point three million in the fund balance. Okay? So there would be money, six point three million to go ahead. I shouldn't have done this for argument's sake, just put that five million there because that is such a deceiving number. And I'm 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 telling you that it's deceiving because our sales tax is up thirty percent for the year. Okay. It's actually thirty-six percent this morning. So it's up thirty-six percent off a sixty million. That's eighteen million dollars that that's gonna be up. If it stayed at thirty-six percent, if it dropped to twenty percent, it would be twelve million dollars. So what'll happen next July is that five million's gonna go to about sixteen or seventeen million based upon revenue that the city's going to produce for twenty twenty-one. Okay, so in twenty twenty-two, when we have the meeting in July, that five million's not gonna be a deal. So in other words, you wouldn't budget for my proposal until July. When the, when the next uh, audited financial statement comes out, then you would, then you would look at this. And let's say again that it's fifteen million. You're only gonna take eight million dollars and leave seven million. And you're never gonna be out of money. You're gonna carry that money on. You'll have, you have the nine million dollars, which will probably go to ten or eleven million dollars in twenty twenty-one of council reserve plus the Tabor reserve plus funded and vacant positions, which is another three million dollars that was in the budget. And we have to remember, the whole budget process through a finance, through a finance uh, a CPA or, you know, we always call them bean counters' eyes, is they're always conservative. They're always conservative. They're always showing you uh, worst case scenarios. They're 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 being conservative here. They're over allowing here. Uh, so at the end of the year, when that audit is done, we made money. We made money. And the one thing we can't forget from two thousand eight, when the Great Recession hit, it took us six or seven years to pull ourselves out of that. So when you look at two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, you're looking at the tail end of the recession as far as the city goes. But if you look at six, at at two thousand sixteen onward, we should have been attacking this, is all I'm saying. I can't stress enough. You can go to the voters and ask them to pay a tax for roads, or you can be a legislator and say, we're not only not gonna charge you a tax for the roads, we're gonna get rid of the street repair utility and do this within the budget. It's and it, I I still think it's a no-brainer. So these numbers are minus the reserves already.
Yes.
They're the.
Your your fund balance is already shows, shows those numbers. Can I say, what, can I say something more?
Yes.
Um, again, we can't do anything without sitting down with finance and saying, you know, can we take, say, X amount out of what we're predicting for sales tax as a goal, goal oriented budgeting toward toward roads? And uh, you know, a- again, what it's gonna take is political will to change that budget. Again, city council is responsible for that budget, so we can change it. It's just a matter of having a discussion with finance that we need to have. I think we should put a, put an initiative on the ballot for debreusing and um, look at, look at putting a certain amount aside as it uh, in the future, um, as as goal oriented toward towards streets. And I think, again, I think we should immediately make it equitable, the um, street fee for business. And and we can do that immediately, but again, we need, we need to sit down with somebody that says it can do it. We're not working. We can't do it. We need to direct somebody to do that.
I think the question would be, moving forward, is that I would like to have another meeting with the finance department here saying that for, giving them an opportunity to look at this these numbers and say, this is the, this is reality. Nice try, Aliff, but you're off fifty million.
Right, right.
Or, no, I don't see any problem with it, and I think that you guys could do it. And when could that happen?
Yeah. Well, we don't have a finance director. So obviously, we won't have one until the first of August, so it's.
You've got somebody that can talk to us now that.
Well, we got Laura Solano, the chief of staff, who's uh, very well versed in in finances, and I'm I'm sure that she can talk with the employees at the finance department.
Right.
And so I wanna say, this is what 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 these numbers are.
Right, right. And 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 what you're worried about, Nick, as far as people campaigning, you you know, you've got five council seats open, so there's gonna be a lot of campaigning and probably a lot of bashing that have sent tax. Um, you can't, you can't really avoid that, and you can't really, yeah, you know, you can't, again, you can't compare this to to the municipal issue at all. It's, it's totally different. So I think you kind of need to just eighty-six that complaint completely.
I think that's a whole different issue. I mean, we're not even arguing about that right now.
Well, I mean.
Who's gonna? I mean, I don't have a million dollars. I don't have a million dollars to campaign against it like a municipalization. Somebody asked me the question, I'd say, no, I don't support it. But I'm not gonna go on TV.
Okay, 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 all right.
I think that's, that's the point. If, yeah, I don't have a problem if you say, no, I don't support it. But if you're out there, you know, appearing in television commercials against it and somebody feels that way, that strongly about it. It's got no chance to pass.
It's not, there's no comparison. There's not gonna be any, anybody doing commercials on that. But you're gonna, you're gonna have five council people, um, um, council seats open, so you're gonna have people campaigning and probably bashing it. Or supporting it, so you can't really, I mean, a- again, we have intelligent voters and they're gonna vote how they want, so.
City can't actively campaign for a half-cent sales tax.
City can't spend any money.
No.
As the mayor, I can campaign for it. As city council, you can campaign for it.
Do you have a political action committee that's putting out money to?
No.
To, to further this cause?
No.
Do you have donors that are gonna pay for the?
No.
For the campaign?
There's nothing been organized at this point. Now, likely that would happen, perhaps. You know, I'm sure there are people would like to see the. Water fee done away with.
Everybody I've talked to, yeah.
They all like it?
They don't like it.
They don't like the water fee or they do?
They don't.
They don't like it, but that's what we have now.
They don't like a half-cent sales tax either, so.
Well, and it's.
They just don't trust us.
Well, it's pretty simple to say. Um, yeah, we don't like our streets. Government ought to do something about it. And here's a plan where. Uh, we can fix the streets and it won't cost you anything. That's just not realistic. You know, to to be able to say to people that, that we can, um, we're gonna be able to do this and it's not gonna cost you a dime. What I'm telling them is it's gonna cost you five cents for every ten dollars you spend on taxable items, but.
You taxed, you tag, you tasked, not taxed, I got taxed on my mind. You task city council to come up with a, with an alternative.
Right.
You, you vocally said that it's in our, it it's in our ball court to come up with an alternative. You put forth your alternative. I'm bringing forth something that says that we get rid of both of them. And all I'm asking is can we have the financial numbers that can, can you vet the numbers? And can we have a meeting where you come back where at least we can make a good decision on, this is stupid. Uh, let's not do it, or that it makes sense. And then, counsel, I mean, your argument is, is. No matter what, even if this is a good idea, put this on the ballot. That's wrong.
That's what we've done before. That's how we funded road repairs in the past, if we had any leftover money. That's what we've done before, and that's what you're suggesting, counselor, is that we'll fund them if we have any money.
We have not funded them and you were not involved in any of those discussions.
We've had no goal, we've had no goal in the budget to fund those.
You don't know how they, they, they come up with the idea of not funding or funding roads. We just know they didn't do it.
Right.
Right, right. I think it's to everybody's benefit, including the the mayors, to take, to take a look at this and and and. Um, to sit down with finance and take a look at at everything.
The sooner the better, because you want, in July twenty-sixth, you have uh, the second reading of the. The half-cent tax, right?
So I would. There's also my alternative too. Have you been looking at that?
We have looked at it and, you know, um. When we survey residents. They're satisfied with the cultural activities we have now. Uh, they're not satisfied with the roads. And so in my mind, the tax that's more likely to pass is a road tax that will address that problem that voters have. Rather than, let's impose a tax, and yet I honestly have been involved in promoting a tax. That would support arts, cultures, nonprofits. And we just got beat to death on that. We got beat to death on that. So I think a road tax has a better chance of passing than a arts and cultural tax, I guess, is how I feel about it. Now, maybe others disagree, but I've, and I say that from the perspective of having pushed. A half-cent sales tax for arts, culture, and nonprofits uh, five or six years ago.
That was a sales tax.
It was a sales tax, yes.
Yeah, the Arts, Culture and Recreation District uh, deals with uh, increasing the mail levy.
Increasing the property taxes?
Yeah, a lot of the cities do this because that's how they fund their, and like I say, you could take six, seven, eight million dollars out of the general fund. That we're using to to do exactly what we wanna do is fix the roads. And take care of the uh.
You know, oh.
But if.
You know, another, another thing that Larry mentioned earlier was taking Petco money for some of this too, which we can, we can vote on as well, so. Um, let's, can, can we please, Laura, get you and somebody from finance to to have the full work session on that? And then can we, can we get a temperature on um, a ballot initiative for debruising?
I think we've got a temperature of the council here. I'll ask uh, the city attorney's office, start drafting ballot language.
Okay, good. So is that possible, Laura? Is that, can we do it?
Yeah, Lori, we're working on it right now.
Okay. Look at the upcoming work sessions, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, July nineteenth is, is it's probably good to hear the audit report next week and that's July the twelfth. July the nineteenth is reserved for a drug program presentation. Is there an opportunity to do both that evening?
No.
No? That puts us, um.
Can we? Nineteenth TV, isn't it?
No, the nineteenth is.
It's the drug program. Yeah, but there's gonna be a hundred and fifty people here.
Oh.
For that.
I think, I think we need a non-televized work session for this. I I really do, just.
A special meeting?
Yeah, why don't we?
Just a work session that's um, non-televized.
And see on a. One night. The week of the nineteenth.
Okay.
If that's okay for everybody, we'll just do a doodle poll and see when we can come.
Are there so many people coming on the nineteenth? It's gonna take.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be an all-nighter. And then you spend, you wanna spend two hours on?
I must not understand what this program's gonna be, the drug program. Does somebody want to?
It's the people who are upset about uh, the needles and all the drug use.
Oh.
Things like that. It's gonna be a big meeting.
Okay. I've been here till two o'clock before, but whatever you wanna do.
I'd rather have two meetings and be here till two in the morning.
Okay.
It's up to you guys.
No, it's up to you. You're the boss, make it.
No, I'm not the boss. I'm. So you send out a poll, just a doodle, what's it called?
A doodle poll?
Doodle.
Tracy or Alyssa.
Doodle or Google?
Either one.
So, so.
Mayor too, cause I want.
It is the week of the nineteenth we're looking for.
So we're in agreement that this needs to be non-televized, correct, or to talk about. What we're talking about tonight on, on a non-televized session.
I don't know, maybe we'll have it on Facebook.
No, I I just don't, I I think when we're, when we're discussing like this, I think it's easier to, to talk, to. To just brainstorm without being on TV.
Yeah, it'll be non-televized.
Okay, good.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Has everybody gotten everything off their chest that they wanna get off? Is everybody? Are we good?
Wine, wine time, wine time.
We're, we're adjourned.